September 7th, it is 6 o'clock. This is a regular meeting for the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Will you all remember that all the caps have gone and cell phones are nearly turned off? Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda was local. Devono, Mr. Shu.
Here.
Thurman, Trahill.
Here.
Ogletree, here. Williamson.
Here.
Gringo. Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any corrections additions to the agenda? There being none, I need a motion to approve. So moved, Mr. Shu. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ogletree, seconded, call the vote, please. Devono.
Yes.
Shu.
Uh, yes.
Trahill.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gringo? Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Three, a second quarter 2025 financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'll be delivering the financial report for the second quarter this evening. I'd like to go through it fund by fund and take questions as we go. That way, um, we can see, handle it as we go.
Alrighty.
Okay, the general fund. So this is through June 2025, June 30th. Revenues collected are $7,227,671. This is approximately 48.5% of the budget. So we're a little shy, we're 1.47% under what we were expecting in terms of revenues. The expenses year-to-date are $7,222,482. That's 44.5% of the budget. So the great news is while we remain a little under-collected, we're also maintaining, um, expenses, uh, under, under-expended as well. So we've expended 44.5% of the budget or $875,395 less than expected. That's 5.4% under-budget and that results in a net increase to fund balance of $5,189. So that means we squeaked through our second quarter report with our revenues still being higher than our expenses. We've done that by being fairly fiscally responsible on the expense side while we continue to see under-collection on the revenue side. So I can refer you, there is the sheet in your packet behind the memo which does detail the general fund. And I will take any questions that you might have regarding the general fund. This is being done mostly through, um, operational efficiencies. Would you like to put the word guitar?
I just had one question.
Sure.
I always have this question because it's hard for me to, to wrap my head around it. When we say that our expenses today are under-expended, is that because we haven't, like you're saying, their costings? Or is it because we have other expenses that are coming down the pipe that will eventually be taken into account?
Sure. So that's going to depend very fund to fund, right? So it might be completely different in capital than it is in general fund. In general fund, the expenses are fairly static. So this example would be, uh, uh, under, under-expending would be more for operational efficiency than it would be a project that we're expecting to come to fruition. Sure.
Thanks. Heida, do you have any questions?
No, uh, Ter, uh, what percentage was it decreased from 2026 to 2025? What was that, 44.5?
Um, are you saying, what, what I've got here, oh, expenditures from last year.
Uh-huh.
But, which, um, which column are you looking at? Councilmember Devono? Are you in the financial report or the memo?
Yes, the general fund, the financial.
Okay, and what was your question again?
What was the disparity between last year and this year?
The variance is, um, last year we have the actual and we have this year's budget through June. We do not have the difference in last year and this year on the general fund. I'm happy to get that for you.
Okay, just.
Thanks, that's why it took me a second to answer. What we're showing in this particular report is last year's expenditures in total, what they were. We're showing this year's budget. We're showing where we should be this year in budget. We're showing where we are and the difference in that. So the variance column isn't against last year. We can certainly produce that report in the future. The variance column in this case is where we should be based on budget for equal quarters and where we are today.
So you're talking about a projection, actually?
We are.
Okay. No questions?
No questions.
Any questions? I don't have any questions here.
Okay. General funds.
I don't have any questions, but I'm actually wasn't really surprised at this figures because really the first six months of the year was really the, the dire part of the year.
It was.
As far as revenues were concerned.
Correct. Okay.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. But, thank you to that, the, 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 you did it.
Yes.
And, um, would you like Councilmember Devono for us to bring back some numbers on where we were against last year? We're happy to do that.
That's fine.
Okay, sure. Power and Light is the next fund. Revenues year-to-date are $4,173,43. This once again is 48% of budget. So we're 175,407 under in our collections in revenue. Operating expenses are $3,890,155. Once again, we're under-expended 46.9% or 253,582 under-expended. This creates a net increase in the balance of the fund of $282,888. Now I want to refer back to Councilmember Ogletree's question on the last fund. What we do with these percentages is we take out all the capital outlay. And the reason we do that is because it's important to evaluate the fund and how it's operating. Its operating revenues against its operating expenditures. For example, if you had capital outlay project dollars that were in the budget and you hadn't yet done that project, it might look like you had a balance, you were operating healthy because you had a balance in that fund. But that is going to go away when that capital project is done. So this, these numbers are apples to apples. It's operating revenues, operating expenses. And that's with the next statement made. The electricity, we also, here, Councilmember Devono, we also can answer your question. In the enterprise funds, we wanted to know what the rate increase that happened on March 1st. We want to know if that resulted in increased revenue over the same period last year. And it did. $142,144 of increased revenue this period over last year. And that is the reflection of the rate increases council put in place March 1st. So any questions on power and light? Karen, Williamson?
So, is, are we remaining under-approached primarily due to make this decision? And what, what, what are we sacrificing to remain the equal?
So you can look at that two different ways. On the general fund, I would say that's operating efficiencies. In power and light, because we had a rate increase, you might look at it this way. We're under-expended by 253,000, but we also had additional revenue of 142,000. So I think you've got a combination of both things going there. We have collected more money than we did last year. It's possible we are also operating under better, uh, operational principles.
Okay.
Could also be, maybe we had an emergency last year or something came up last year and it hasn't this year.
Either way, I, I think it's very, uh, positive news for the situation.
Absolutely. Also keep in mind that our power and light fund and our gas fund are also driven by temperature.
Right.
Right? So that's the other thing. It's been a great summer, people are using less electricity. We've seen that come out in the second quarter.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Trahill?
No questions.
Mr. Shu?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I have a, I don't have a question.
Sure.
I ask you to explain, so on capital improvement funds.
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay if the expenses aren't in there, but the revenues aren't in there either.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's a true.
It's a true look at operating expenses and revenues.
Okay.
That's what I mean. Yes, and keep in mind each of the enterprise funds has its own capital outlay. The general fund does not have capital outlay. We're seeing that in the capital improvement fund. Correct. Thank you. As long as our capital improvement fund tax remains in place, then we'll be able to do that. Without CIP, then of course we would have to move projects into the general fund. So we'd see quite a different picture there. Okay? Water fund. So this is where we start to see, when we do a positive project, like Mr. Vehl has been presenting on with the tank improvements. Those tank improvements require us to do water restrictions. Water restrictions meaning we've got less water going out to customers. And so we're going to see that reflected in both this revenue and a little bit in the sewer fund as we go over these funds. Operating revenues through June 30th are $1,612,441. This is only 41.7% of the budget. So we're 8.3% under where we hope to be in collection of water revenue right now. That's directly related to the water restrictions we have in place, at least we believe. That's what's going on there. Expenses are $1,829,433. I also want to point out that the director who's operating this department has been really conscious of the fact that revenues were expected to be down. Therefore, he's holding expenses as close to the best as we can. We're only at 43.4% of budget, which is 275,818 under-expended. So while we are, uh, tend, tend, tending to go that way, I want to point out before we go to the next sentence that we do have less revenue coming in, in this fund at this point in the year than we do expenses. So this results in a net fund balance decrease of $216,992. Once again, the revenues and the expenditures for capital improvement projects are not included. This is operational expenses only. The water rate increase went into effect March 1 and it's resulted in, even with the revenue that we made up in the fund, we're still at 86,915 less than last year. Had we not held operational expenses closer, that would be a much higher number. So, once again, the water tank rehabilitation project's underway. We've completed Northside tank in July and we're following with Allen Dell tank next. Just to let you know, this goes through spring of next year. So these water restrictions, we don't have the ability to restrict an area of town based on the tank which we're rehabilitating. Unfortunately, we just with the system that we have with our distribution lines, we don't have that opportunity. So we are on water restrictions citywide and that will continue through spring. Okay? So grass is a little browner, but our water tanks are a little shiny here. Okay. There you go. Any questions for the water fund? Questions?
No, no more.
We've had a lot of rain this season.
We have, and that's helped. I mean, it's helped with the grass, it hasn't helped with the water. Okay. Gas fund. So gas fund is kind of the opposite story of water. And this is because it was so, so darn cold last December and January that gas is up, remains up. Operating revenue revenues collected through June are $3,185,011. That's 75.7% of budget. We are way over-collected and 25.7%, over. Commercial and residential sales are both over-collected by $1,081.11 and that is due to the colder temperatures experienced at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. This amount has begun to level out. So if you just compare summer to summer, we're pretty even. If you include the first quarter of this year, that's where you see the growth. Expenses as of June 30th are $2,194,695. So that is 53.5% of budget. We are a little bit over-budget on the expenditures. And that is being borne by the revenues being so high. The result is net revenue expenditures in a positive of $990,349. Once again, this is calculated without capital expenditures. The gas rate delivery charge increase that went into effect on March 1, it also includes a 10% increase in the gas supply charge that went into effect last November 1st of 2024. The result is an increase in revenue of $575,588 over the same period last year. I'll remind you that Ms. Navarette reported when we gave the first quarter report that $300,000 of that $575,588 has been applied to the deferred gas cost. You may remember council in the past wrote off some expenditures and we've got that. So we are chewing away at that with this additional revenue, okay? Questions on gas? For the second quarter? So we'll be watching expenditures on this because we're at 53% to make sure that if third quarter we're coming in closer on the flood side to 75% because even when you have extra revenue, we want to watch those operational efficiencies. Okay? Questions? Okay, now questions on gas? Sewer fund. So once again, sewer is impacted by water. That's the way the rates work. The revenues for June, uh, as of June were $1,278,543. This is 48.6% of budget or 1.4% over. So if you look back at water, it's interesting, they're almost identical percentages of revenue collection just under, right? Or, let me look back and see. Now, water's a little bit more under, that was helpful, thank you all much. Um, expenses today are $1,195,057. Once again, just like gas, this is 53.6% of budget or 3.6% over. So this again will draw the question of what's driving those operational efficiencies? Did we have more, um, what drove, drove that difference? Why are we a little bit overextended? Was there something that happened in this first or second quarter in both gas and sewer department that drove that? So from the management side, those are the things we're looking for. When we look at, um, percentages of operating revenue to expenditures, we're evaluating how the fund is operating, okay? Um, the sewer rate increase went into effect on March 1st and it's resulting in an increase in revenue of $57,156 over the same period last year. So something happened in the second quarter here to drive those expenses up a little more, but it wasn't enough to put the fund balance down. Okay? Um, questions on sewer? Okay. And I'll be meeting with Jacob's next week. This will be a subject of conversation.
I know.
Okay. Lottery fund. Well, just a reminder, lottery is a tax or a fund rather, uh, uh, revenue stream that comes to us from the state. It is to be, um, expended in our parks. So, uh, Councilmember Ogletree, this is an example where a lot of our lottery funds go into operating the swimming pool. So we're seeing a lot of expenditures in the second quarter and we'll see the bulk of those come to fruition in the third quarter. So lottery receipts year-to-date are $48,422, which is 44% of budget. So, once again, this is a state allotment. We budget what we think that allotment will be and then we accept what the allotment is. Expenses through the second quarter are $57,960 or 24.7% of the budget, resulting in a fund balance of $9,538. So in this case, we had lottery funds from last year and that's why we have a positive balance at the end. We're expecting a large chunk of these to be spent in July and August. So you're going to see this be lock cited almost nothing in the first quarter. You start seeing expenditures from the, the pool opens around Memorial Day weekend. We're seeing activity there in June. Then we'll see more activity in July and August. So we'll have a better idea of where this fund stands at the end of the third quarter. Um.
Question about that. Something I've always been curious about. Is it just the Colorado Lottery that we get money from? Or do we get money from Powerball, Mega Millions and all those?
No, I'm not sure I could answer that. I'm happy to look into that for you. I just always thought that's the lottery stuff.
Just Colorado.
Exactly where it's. Happy to, happy to find out.
It's only Colorado.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Shu. Okay, that makes sense.
I have a question too.
Sure.
Not about the funds per city. But when we had marijuana and we were expending a lot of marijuana tax money, we did a pay-as-you-go. Is that what we do with the lottery funds as well?
Pretty much.
Okay. Since you shouldn't ever be in trouble with the lottery. You should never be in trouble with the lottery.
We, uh, on the lottery, have you been, you know, sure you have?
No.
On the lottery, when we put that into the swimming pool and that, did that much, does that many cover expenses? Because every year we seem to have burners burn out and there are the heating systems. Or do we take that out of, out of our capital?
Um, that goes in, that comes out of the lottery fund and we do generally budget for maintenance and operation of the swimming pool. So it's coming out lottery. It's an eligible expense. We've tried different funds to put different things in lottery and sometimes the state kicks it back and you have to move it to capital or general fund. But in general, we've never had an issue getting the pool pin for out of lottery. It's a community benefit. Tourism fund. Okay, I'm happy to report that we had some additional collections on tourism since our work session. So I'm very excited to point out a couple of these things. Revenues year-to-date are $412,608 or 51.4% of the budget. So I want to hop ahead and point out two things. We did finish collecting second quarters, so second quarter's completing it. At the work session, I believe I reported 364 and this is 412. Uh, expense, uh, I'm going to hop ahead and talk about these revenues for a second. This includes $45,601 that was made at Santa Fe Trail Days. So this includes Santa Fe Trail revenue. It also includes $8,678 from the Welcome Center. So our little gift shop at the Welcome Center has brought in quite a bit of revenue there. Between the revenues from Santa Fe Trail Days of $45,601 and the revenue from the Welcome Center of $8,678, it bailed us out. We're still $56,000 short in lodging tax of where we expected to be. So even though I'm reporting that this fund is balanced for the quarter, I do want to remind you that we're still $56,000 short in lodging tax. What we're seeing here is that Santa Fe Trail Days and the Welcome Center made the gap in revenue. So yay to city staff who put on Santa Fe Trail Days. Excellent. Uh, expenses are $452,228. That's 56.3% of the budget. I think I reported at the work session, we're running over percentage on expenditures. That results in a decrease in fund balance. The fund balance is negative $39,620. So even though our event and our little gift shop bailed out the revenues, our expenses are still outpacing revenue in this fund. Um, I should report to City Council that I moved all salaries out of this fund and back into the general fund for September 1st. So we will still see some of the salaries from July and August in third quarter, but in September through the rest of this year, those salaries have been moved into, um, general fund. Hoping to end the year with tourism balanced based on the budget. Because I am not anticipating revenues for tourism will actually hit the numbers that we budgeted for. Not anticipating that. And I'll also remind you, and it'll be in my city manager report, well, I'll just talk more about, well, we'll have some upcoming discussion more on this fund on the 29th of this month. Okay, Economic Development Fund, there's still a little activity in the fund through June 30th. We just depositing money in there and we've not had any incentives that have come out in the first six months of the year. Okay? Happy to have you a detailed report on when the last time we had activity, but there wasn't any activity for these first two quarters. So capital, this explained, this, um, deserves a little explaining. Revenues to date are $13,359,779. So before we even get to expenditures and the balance, that's the RACE grant from the federal government for the railroad. Remember that we are the pass-through agency for that. So we are both recognizing the revenue from that and then we will hold that money and it will be shown in our balance. And then as expenditures go out, that money will go down. Which is to remind you that we have significant dollars in federal grants that we're holding right now for the region, for the entire region, okay? Uh, projects, expenses and expenditures and encumbrances are $5,098,718. So that's what we've expended this month and that does include, um, 2.8 million of the RACE grant is in there that has gone out. And that includes an increase in fund balance of $8,261,060, okay? And that balance is the balance of the RACE grant.
Questions? Do we still have some major projects?
We do. Um, Convent and Church, some certainly what you're discussing tonight. Um, and y'all here in my pickle, if you.
I'm reporting.
About pickleball.
Finishing, my pickle reporter will be positive for pickleball tonight. So, and that, that's coming out. And those expenses we're seeing mostly July and August. So this is just through June, so there's additional expenditures for July and August.
Um, the, we're acting as a custodian for that grant.
We are.
What, um, I, I would, I don't know the rules that govern that, but do we see any benefit of pulling out, be able to see, um, interest or any gains from that?
Can I report back to you on that?
Yeah.
Let me look into that and get back to you on that. Be happy to do that. Thank you. That's the financial report for second quarter. Do you like this format?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Great.
We're just following what Ms. Navarette laid forward, so we'll continue to do this. Uh, we do hope to, we will, as we've got our new staff in place, be a little more, hopefully we can do this at 60 days after the close of the quarter. So that is our goal for the next, uh, we may have a third quarter a little bit later than we like, but by next year we should be on a 60-day reporting cycle after the close of the quarter.
Taking into consideration all the changes we've seen.
There you go.
I think that's pretty good.
Right. Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you so much, that's the report.
Okay. Item number four, petitions or communications are all written. This is the section where we have, we, uh, have public comment, anything or everything. Just be mindful to be respectful. You have a five-minute, uh, time limit. You will be warned when you have one minute to go. So we're asking that you wrap up your, your request. Collexico Alliance, Pat Howard.
Hello, my name's Pat Howard, uh, president of the Collexico Alliance. Thank you, Mayor, our council, staff. Uh, we appreciate all you guys do. Uh, know that your work is challenging as is ours. Been a little while since I've been here, so I've got some notes here so I can save them in my, my five-minute figure bit up there. Um, we completed our reorganization and are now a stronger partner to our member businesses and the communities we serve in Los Angeles, where, you know, in Colfax County. We've invested a little over $5,000 in this part of the transition, which makes us the only business organization of our kind in the U.S. across state lines. We're also the largest business organization of our kind by area, serving over 10,000 square miles. You'll note we did not ask for any funding to accomplish this. It's been a member-led and funded operation and this allows us to become a stronger advocate for our members. Side note, I've been contacted by five chambers across the country, one being the Greater Baltimore Chamber, uh, as they see what we're doing as a model. We've said all along that our region of the U.S. has been historically connected in commerce for generations. Um, I just did an interview with Melissa with the USA Colorado 250-150 Project and wanted to share a couple of things that I think are pertinent to where we are. Ruffinow County was founded in 1861, Los Ananas County in 1866, Colfax County in 1869. Colorado became the 35th, 38th state in, uh, 1876. Trinidad was founded in 1879, Raton, 1880. Point of that is the Trinidad-Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce was founded in 1881, five years after Colorado became a state. We're the second oldest in the state behind the Greater Denver Chamber and at that time they were still in tents and wood buildings on the Flat River and we were building with brick. Uh, by the way, New Mexico became the 47th state in 1912, 31 years after our chamber was founded. Our organization matters both historically and today now. Commerce is behind all of that history. It's because of businesses that we're here. It's not because a group of people decided to go out west and create a government. Frankly, it's the opposite of that. Towns exist because commerce and prosper, uh, prosper or fail due to economic success. Hundreds of chambers and small business organizations have come and gone across Colorado and New Mexico and assigned. And the reason is the work we do is hard. It's hard to get business owners, they see past competition and to invest money in a mutually beneficial economy. Um, getting our municipalities and public organizations to see the value and indirectly. Um, getting our municipalities and public organizations to see the value and indirectly partnering with their businesses is also hard. We're a five oh one C six, not a five oh one C three. We're not a nonprofit. We're a business member, own the PBC organization. The funds we steward are property of our members, and when our organization ran into revenue challenges in the past, instead of doubling down on our core mission, it decided to become an event coordinator with beer gardens and bounce houses. Um, you're, you're welcome for the Santa Fe Chamber of States. We used to do that. Uh, we no longer in that business. However, we just participated with our friends at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Chili Fest with the Coors here, and we're actively working with Raton, Simroon, Walsimur, and partnerships, uh, and promotions. Want you to keep an eye out for some announcements we've got coming on because we've got some regional players that are going to be joining the alliance. Chambers can join the alliance, cities can join the alliance, towns can join the alliance. This really is for regional economic development in all of our areas. Uh, we do need to catch the city, uh, membership dues up. The problem with that has been, uh, the, the addresses we had for your counter, Stephen and Vicorius. So emails that went out wasn't going out to anybody that was actively working with the city. I think we're about two years behind on that, and we'll work, we'll get, uh, if you can get that going. Um, we have an, I have a meeting scheduled with our city manager and can share that our work together already on tour has proven that she's the perfect partner, uh, for us to all get where we want to go. I've also, um, given you guys a, a copy of our three-year, uh, business plan. We intend to run like a business. We're a business organization. We intend to run that way. This is the concise plan. We have a six-page, um, more expanded plan that actually goes more into our numbers. We've sorted a lot of that numbers. We're in the same, we've got to make sure we do what we need to do to exist. Um, and now that our financial, uh, work is complete, we intend to become more visible and vocal advocates for our business community and better collaborators, sorry, no, perfect. And better collaborators with our partners and ask that we are invited to discussions that are relevant to our business owners, um, to and to organizational leaders. But that's who we represent by, that's why we're tax exempt, okay? Uh, we think we deserve a seat at these tables for economic development, tourism-related businesses. We will be gathering our lodging partners together. All the hotels are members of, all the bigger hotels are members of the alliance, and they have, uh, certainly interest in the Columbia. Make sure they're heard. Um, and thank you very much. It's good to see you all again. Some great work. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
No other petitions or communications. In the end, last, last meeting we had, and this will be, item five, council reports.
The, the Creative District, along with Oedip and I believe the barn, I, Ranch are sponsoring the Get Lit Festival, which is this weekend, starts Friday night, and it's all day Saturday. And if you're interested in learning about, um, learning how to write, uh, increasing your, um, publication, there's, there's some amazing writers who are coming to town and are going to be doing workshops all day on Saturday. And there's a cost, I think it's eighty dollars for that full day of workshops. They all look great to me. Um, but check the, um, city website and then the Creative District website to find out more about that. And then on Monday, um, many of we'll probably talk about this perhaps as well. There is an open house for the summit that the Creative District will be hosting on behalf of and with the city, um, in early June of next year. And summits are huge deals. People from all over the state will come to Trinidad. Um, people who are involved in creative industries, and it is an incredible showcase for our city. And so if you want to learn, learn more about it, how your creative business can be part of it, come to that. It's a short memo on Monday at one o'clock at the Collins.
Thank you. Mr. DeGron.
Yeah. Uh, nothing to report. The lesson was kind of better than this council. This, uh, time is. Yeah.
Sweet, sweet. Mr. Trudy.
Chili Fest was a success, once again, despite the two hours of rain. Um, everyone seemed like they had a great time. Uh, we hunkered down, they stuck it through, and everyone came back out when the sun came up, so we had a great turnout for the rest of the evening. Um, also the CCI planning summit, like we had mentioned, is going to be on, uh, September twenty-second at one o'clock. Please come down if you have any interest in, in checking out or wanting to be, participate in. Um, if you know people that are interested, have digital marketing experience, art, local artists. Um, we're still looking for people to design trophies. Uh, is there other thing?
And to do presentations.
And to do presentations as well. So if you know anybody, reach out, have them be there that day. So this way we can make this a great turnout. We were talking about a hundred breakout sessions.
Seventy-five, it's in seventy-five.
Seventy-five, finally, I think is what we said, a hundred and seventy-five breakout sessions. We're trying to fill those in. We're gonna be all over the city. Um, three to five hundred people are expected to be here. So the more participation we have locally, the better representation that we have. So we, it's our time to showcase what we've got, and we've got some good stuff around here, so might as well show it. That's all I got.
All right, sir.
No report, ma'am.
I just have a few, uh, items. I got two, um, postcards, and they're both from the same individual, from a retired art teacher in Denver. Due unto others and it's signed date, and they don't want the ice concentration camps in Walsimur. There's two of them. Um, I, I really had a great experience Saturday. Uh, Mr. Chatterley signed me up to do the green flag for the Trans Am Vintage Motorcycle Race. I got up at six, I was there at six-thirty in the morning, and it was pretty amazing as an ex-biker myself to have, to see Harley-Davidsons that are over a hundred years old, traveling from the east coast to the west coast. They made it to Trinidad, and that morning, and that was the same morning as the Chili Festival, it was raining, and they were going over Wolf Creek Pass. But now I'm following to see how many of these guys are, are continuing on and making this trek. All of them went, came through, uh, Wolf Creek Pass with flying colors. It was pretty amazing. If you want to see, there's, they made some really, really good comments about Trinidad. Victor, uh, the terrorist down at Space to Create, did a great job. Friday night, we had, uh, they had a dinner for him, and one of the gentlemen that morning told me that that's where the only community that did that. Nobody else has done that. And they were just excited that the mayor came and did the, the start of the race. And when I told them I used to write Harley's myself, it was like I was part of the semi, part of the group. Wonderful. So, um, that was really nice, but please just Google Trans Am Motorcycle. Uh, just do Trans Am, Trans America Motorcycle Race. And if you follow the stages and you click on Trinidad, the, the comments and the pictures from Trinidad are there. And then a couple hours later, I went home and ate breakfast and came back to the Chili Festival at ten o'clock. And we, uh, Ms. Marshall and I and Father, um, Sylvie from Holy Trinity did the opening remarks for the Chili Festival. You know, I don't think people understand and realize the amount of work that goes into a, you know, an event like that, and ninety-nine percent of it was done on volunteer basis. And it, it's very, it was very nice to see. I mean, that, that came together so beautifully. It was very nice. And, uh, just, uh, an event that's coming up next month, October fourth, the skateboard community is having an event at the Skateboard Park. And to me, this is really, I'm so happy that this is taking place. As I sit as mayor, excuse me, mayor of Trinidad, cause this was a long haul. We've been working on the repairs of that skateboard park for two years, and to see it come to fruition is wonderful. So I think, yeah, I think it would be who, for all of us to be there and to congratulate these people that have worked so hard to get this park, to support the park. And I have no doubt that they're going to be good, uh, stewards of our, of our property. Um, I went back and, I went and looked at it after it was finished, and it is absolutely gorgeous. I never thought I'd say that at Skateboard Park, but it is really nice. So please put mark on your calendar, October fourth. There's not too many things we can celebrate, but I think that would be a wonderful place to celebrate with the skateboarders and. I started this journey, I don't want to keep too long, but just to tell you. You know, when you say skateboarder, you think of a fourteen-year-old kid with shorts and a t-shirt and a cap put backward on his head. So they were happy, they were frustrated because they thought we were trying to intentionally delay the project. So that was about my first couple of months as mayor, and I said, okay. I said, look, tell me what your concerns are. We met at Mutney, uh, one afternoon after work, and I bet you there were maybe, maybe two people under twenty years old. Everybody else is in their fifties and sixties, and I looked at them and I said, what is wrong with you? Skateboarding at sixteen, uh, but they, it's, they are avid, avid skateboarding enthusiasts, so I think that's, that's great. Don't ever prejudge anything or anybody, because it's, you're gonna find that you're gonna be surprised. And that's it. And my council report, item six is consent agenda approval. Item six, any approval of the regular mini leading minutes of September second, twenty twenty-five. Item six C, approval of special event permit application. Mal Linus and Spirituous File by Kuanis Club of Trinidad, of Trinidad Foundation at two one West Main Street on September twenty-second, twenty-seventh, excuse me, at twenty twenty-five. That's for the Rad Dis and Mrs. Rogers's daughter, Mary Loft, that is there to represent Kuanis Club. Item six C, set the public hearings for the twenty-twenty-six budget and capital budget estimates on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at six p.m. Item six D, approval of bills totaling one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Item six E, approval of payroll August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five through September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So who?
Mr. Trudy, Mr. Shu Second. Call for the vote, please.
Tabona?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Trell?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. Item seven, the public hearings, we have none. Item eight, unfinished business, we have nine. Under item nine, nine A, memorial resolution for the city council acknowledging the contributions of Anthony Mate upon his passing. I will read the resolution. A memorial resolution for this, of the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Anthony Mate upon his passing. Whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has seen fit to take Anthony Mate from this earthly life, and whereas Anthony Mate faithfully served the people of the city of Trinidad as a member of the city council from August twenty-twelve through May twenty-twenty, serving as mayor pro temp from January twenty-sixteen to January twenty-eighteen. And whereas during his lifetime, Anthony Mate dedicated himself to a distinguished career with the Colorado State Patrol for almost thirty years, where he received two valor awards for heroic act, uh, action and conspicuous valor above and beyond the call of duty. And whereas Anthony Mate's call to public service continued after retiring from the Colorado State Patrol, working for the Los Anamis County Sheriff's Office, for the Los Anamis County Treasurer's Office, then a member of the school, Trinidad School District Number One School Board. And whereas Anthony Mate's commitment to his faith and community overlapped his public service through his involvement with Holy Trinity Parish. As a member of the parish council and on the board of directors for Friends of Historical Trinidad and with the Catholic parish community and communities in his Denver neighborhood, where he resided at the time of passing. And whereas Anthony Mate, Mate's legacy of service should serve as an example to others with the understanding that he did it because what happens to and in our community matters, and that we should work together to make things happen. And whereas upon the passing of Anthony Mate, the city of Trinidad wishes by this rec, resolution to acknowledge his contributions to the community and to express our regret and sorrow to his family. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, that the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Anthony Mate. And by this resolution, do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions he made to the Trinidad community. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall become part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the Trinidad City Council, and a copy of this same resolution will be provided to Anthony's family. Introduce, I, I, I didn't write it ver, I didn't read it, uh, verbatim, but I edited. Introduce, read and adopt it this sixteenth day of September, twenty twenty-five. There's a signature of the lines for all six city councilmen and my signature as well. So it's a, it's one of the highest honors we can, we can give somebody that's served the community. I gotta, I gotta tell you, um, Anthony sat where Aaron sat, and that was my first time being elected. And I'll tell you, after I was forming, they told me this, I was sitting where Eli was sitting. My knees were knocking so bad I couldn't walk. And it's, I guess Anthony saw my eyes, the deer in the hare, headlights, eyes, came and got my iPad because I couldn't hold it. I was shaking so much. He sat down and he, from that minute forward, mentored me for all the years that we were on council together. I'll never forget, he told me one time, I said, you know, you've got your bravery and your guts. You have no fear of saying anything. And he told me one time, when you stare down the barrel of a gun, talking to people the way they should be talking is a piece of cake. So rest yourself. Okay. I need, do I need a motion to approve the resolution?
Um, yeah, I, I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I, I need a resolution to approve, I'm, uh, a motion to approve the resolution?
Salute.
Oboltry, motion? And Shu Second, if call the vote, please.
Tabona?
Yes.
Shil?
Yes.
Trell?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. Item nine B, consideration of the twenty-twenty-six property casualty and workman's compensation, we're no fault from Sursa. Please be advised they were corrected, the, the, it, it came corrected, so we shouldn't have the right corrective information. Mr.?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, um, the city received quotes from Sursa for our property casualty and worker compensation coverage for twenty twenty-six. And, um, this year we received a slight decrease compared to last year's quotes for our coverage. Um, as you know, Sursa's been our insurer for over thirty years and, um, they've always, they've always been really great to work with and have always, um, hired the best of the best attorneys when we needed to have those attorneys on our side. So, um, with, with that, um, the recommendation would be to renew our property casualty insurance coverage and our work comp coverage through Sursa. And, um, And elect to continue the no fault water line or transfer backup coverage as an added policy. Property damage for mobile equipment as an added policy and also excess fiber liability. And again, we'll, we'll realize that decrease, but just remind that although it was, increases are great, it's, you know, the last five years, we've seen half a million dollars, more than half a million dollars in increases. So this slight decreases, just slight in comparison. And I apologize for my math errors. I had this done two weeks ago and I said, huh. I love what I did. Sorry, so sorry about that.
Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you, honor.
Mr. Trejo?
I have no questions. No questions.
I have no questions, but you know, I saw someone here. The workman's compensation decreased because of safety measures within the city, so that's really good.
Our work comp numbers as far as payments have been decreasing. These numbers that are identified on the renewal with five hundred and seventy-one thousand is the, the plan that has the one thousand dollar deductible. I think if they continue to trend the way they are, probably next year, we can look at the twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. I'm just a little nervous though because we had a good three-year stretch so far. I'm probably with my little hands. But prior to that, the numbers were rather high and it would be really scary to go to a higher deductible. So we'll have to wait and see what, what the rest of this year looks like and see where we are next year, if I recall.
Maybe the water, the water, the weather is, has cooperated this year. And what people don't understand, just for an FYI, if the we, if the hailstorms hit in metro areas, because we're in a cooperative, I guess, we are, rates increase as well. So it's been good all, all across the state for twenty twenty five and we're reaping the benefits of it, so.
Well, and keep in mind to last year, last year, our deductible was increased, as was everyone's across the board, and five thousand. And, you know, Sursa's very careful about doing anything cosmetic anymore.
Yeah.
No cosmetic repairs to roofs. I don't even know what they would do with vehicles right now. It's just too costly.
Yes. It's just, this is the age that we're living in for our insurance. Thank you, honor.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion to accept the property casualty workman's compensation removal.
Some move.
From Sursa. Councilman Williamson, move second.
Second.
Mr. Trejo seconded, call the vote, please. Tabona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item nine C consideration of the request for bid submitted by Western Civil Contractors for the Church Street Improvement Project number oh eight dash twenty twenty five.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. See, I come before you deny the consideration of the bid for the Church Street Improvement Project. Understanding the bid tab that was, that was sent out, it's kind of small, so I printed.
We've got, we've got.
Oh, awesome.
Did everybody get it?
Yep.
There. Even I want to go and pass them out a little bit. See, this is like, that's a little bit better.
Yeah.
Is your pass amount any?
She's gonna pass it anyway.
You can't say no.
Mr. Jezz has highlighted some of the top three. Thank you.
So we received three bids for the project. Showing in the, the light green is the low bid from each category. So engineer's estimate's on the far left. Western Civil Contractor was a low bid of three million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand and oh sixty-six dollars. Engineer's estimate was just slightly below that. We came in at three million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. The next two bids were significantly higher. I suspect you want to know why, I can't answer that. It's the way every contractor bids a project. I can't, I can't tell you that we put a lot of effort into the, into the bid, putting this bid schedule together and we didn't miss it by much. The two other contractors are not local, so there's probably additional fees. One that really blew my mind was the first item I paid construction. Their mobilization on the project was eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. I don't know if they'd give us that number because we could generally pay twenty-five percent of the mobilization at the start of the project to cover bonds, insurance, whatnot. That was kind of my bother, but we feel that Western Civil's bid is right in line with our numbers. So if that opened up to questions.
Mr. Ogletree?
Thank you for doing this, this is really helpful having it highlighted, which are the lowest and the highest. Um, because as I try to split this. And what I, the only thing I could tell is that Western Civil sometimes seemed like they were way low and then other times they were higher than the other ones. So it's, it really is a hard thing to judge who exactly is doing exactly what you want them to do. But in the end, they came out closest to what your estimate was and they feel comfortable of it, so thank you.
Okay.
No, thank you, honor. Well, on Western Civil, I understand they have some jobs that they're doing. So is that going to be a problem for them to get this completed in a short amount of time? Because I, they're not, they're not as big as some of the other outfits that are doing this. So they would have to sub contract a lot of that.
Some of it is subcontracting, the sewer supplying is obviously something that they don't do. And I don't think any of the three contractors knew they were going to sub that out. And lining the mamples is something that would be subbed as well. I don't know, I, we haven't touched base. I assume they, they know that if you guys give award tonight, they got to come to us within two to three weeks with the notes to proceed with the bond. So this project, we don't have the time to, to weigh on that whenever, so. It is a three hundred and sixty-five day construction project. We hope it doesn't take that long, if that's what it is.
And what, would you count for the starting date, would be up to them?
Not really, like I said, once we, we, we award tonight, we set up the work packet tomorrow. And they have two to three weeks to get their, their final bid bond, excuse me, their performance bond. They already had a bid bond, they bid the project their performance bond in place. And then we will have a construction meeting, notes should proceed. And that's when the clock sticks, is if the notes proceed to date.
In your, in your opinion, do you think they can handle the job compared to some of the other groups? I mean, even though they're higher? I mean, you know, I've had experience with them and then the group that did, first we did, really excellent job. And I understand that the bids are higher because they're out of town and they have to take care of their employees. But I'm just kind of curious what your opinion is. I, I, and I'm not asking you to compare any, I'm just asking you to think that Western Civil would be okay to handle the job?
I, I think so. Um, they're probably going to have a sub doing the concrete as well. Concrete sidewalks, curb gutter, underlying concrete underneath the bricks. They, they do a lot of pipe work. They did a good job on Saddle Road. Um, so I, I don't have a, I feel that they'll probably be able to do this job, they get other subs like that.
Thank you. Mr. Trejo?
Just kind of curious, because there's a line item on here for the demolition of bleachers and adjoining building.
Correct.
Okay, where is that, the ones around this?
That is mine, item.
One oh nine.
One oh nine, correct.
Yes, I'm just kind of curious, because that's on the other side of Church Street, or is there some bleachers I'm missing?
It's the bleachers and the, the, concrete, concrete reaches and the, the football field. When this line transaction goes through Little Leonea.
Oh, okay, so just adding, and that's not part of the infrastructure deal?
No.
Okay.
We were asked to put it in there so when, uh, for next year, the Santa Fe Trail days, it kind of opens up that space a little bit more. So, and.
This is a hazard.
I just, I just, I just wanted to point out, I need, I'm worried in for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jezz. Thank you.
Um, Bob, I was, I wanted to ask, um, it's been a long time since we've had the work session, but I know that we had discussed there being the bottleneck of an old and small sewer there. That, that's going to go away with this project, correct?
Um, it's actually not a small sewer, it's ten-inch line. So there's seven point repairs and basically with the point, we had the, the yard company come through and video camera. They identified areas where, where the old play line was either failing or had done some vertical separation. So what they basically ought to do in those point repairs, they'll go in and, they go in, cut out that bad section, uh, couple in a new piece of pipe. So those are all basically repaired and the structure of the pipe then is good enough then that we can run the sock through.
Okay.
And the, the good thing about the new line here is it, uh, it's very efficient for flow capacity versus the old play pipe. So you lose a little bit of diameter, but you pick it up in flow characteristics, so.
Okay, and that, that is not a pressurized line?
No, it's a gravity line. Yeah.
Um, you just, uh, you know, I, I obviously would have the same concern about it being completed on time and, um, coming in at budget. What, what, is there, um, I know as, like, as usual, looking in the crystal ball, but what? If there's discovered conditions, is there room for any change orders that might happen? And is that being given consideration?
It has, and, uh, I was in El, Elmo's this morning at Sursa training. But in the, I guess at the, uh, character probably speak to it this morning at the development meeting, Mr. Mason is in. Well, I think we have about seven, eight percent contingency on the budget.
Yeah, it's close to ten percent contingency.
We were hoping to be around fifteen, but, uh.
Yeah, a little under. We consider the grants and all the stuff that's, there's some stuff that's not included in this because it's city, completed by city forces. So they get gas and some electric. So adding those on top of that and, uh, some of the stuff that goes into the project itself. It ends up about ten, a little under ten percent contingency, so. Uh, the big telltale is going to be the sewer, like Bob was mentioning, because once we get past that sewer, that's going to be a real big unknown. After that, a lot of these are pretty straightforward, not too many. And actually, the prices actually work out better for the water and the conduit. There's, they gave us some better prices, so if there's change orders on that, we won't feel on this hard just because their, their prices were better, so.
Okay.
But yeah, the, the, the big, the big one is going to be the sewer, obviously. But in Su, I think it's in Su Two Formas there, so that's correct. That was the same company that camera, they, they should have a pretty good grasp of what's going to happen. I think they're going to do the point repairs as well, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Okay. I have no further question, Mayor.
At what point during this process does the contractor have to submit like insurance and all the documentation he needs?
That, that is done right at the, in this two week, two to three week period. So like I said, if things are awarded tonight, we'll notice them, we'll give the award tomorrow. And then they have two to three weeks to come back with their, their bond, their performance bond, their insurance. And then we have a construction meeting. And that starts, that's the date of start of those proceeding, they, they drove the time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. On a good duty to mention, um, the source of the funds for the public records, the name of mine.
Yeah, you asked me. Actually.
Yeah, so we are, we have two grants, uh, it's developed through DOLA, one's a E I, E I A F grants. Uh, that's the more housing now. And then there's a Stronger Communities Grant. It's totaling, those two grant awards are including matches, just, just over five million dollars. There's some commitments on the Stronger Communities Grant to, um, actually that goes into the project, that the project being the Holy Trinity renovation of, of the school to become a forty-sixteen apartment complex. Um, so there's roughly a million that goes into that. That's, it's kind of, it's a special aspect of it, because typically grants from the state, from DOLA, don't go into private property. But this grant's special that way. But after that, it, leave the rest of it is for the public improvements. And, and there's a little bit that we could use for their services, so their utility services. Um, that'll be completed by Western Civil or whoever's word contractor, so. Yeah, five million dollars and, and it's, they're kind of funky because the matches aren't the same. The one of them is fifteen percent match, one of them is five hundred percent match. It averages out close to a million, it's actually, or I'm sorry, close to twenty percent, it's at nineteen percent. So I think totaling nine hundred and eighty thousand in match, uh, that we're going to, that's coming through the development at the Holy Trinity. A combination of the development, the Holy Trinity, the city more housing now, because we awarded that to the project. Um, and then, uh, there might be in touch at a C I P just because we had a late award notice. We originally got awarded four million and they added an extra million that kind of, that had fifteen percent match that we were more than happy to take because obviously we're, we're, we're kind of, like you said, ten percent contingency, we're kind of, kind of close. But there was an extra hundred fifty thousand dollar match, uh, that's kind of, that was kind of not really planned for. So we might be looking at C I P for that, but well worth it for a five million dollar project.
Okay, thank you.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Just to state that.
That's, that's, that's a good exchange rate there.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mason, thanks, Mr. Jezz.
Also, I'd like to reiterate, all the design of this project was done internally through our department, which probably saved the city this project for about three hundred and fifty thousand if we had went out, so. I'm very proud of my staff, thank you.
Richard, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I got some good feedback on your staff for this project as well, so. I think that that's, that reflected in the bid, you know, the low bid. I think it was concise enough that they worked with it, so thank you.
Thanks, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to request, to, uh, request for bid submitted by Western Civil. To approve the request for bid submitted by Western Civil Contractors for the Church Street Improvement Project zero eight dash twenty twenty five. I need a motion?
Some move.
Mr. Trejo, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shu seconded, call the vote, please. Tabona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. That's enthusiastic. Ninety consideration of approval for the mayor's assignment letter, a request to the Department of Local Affairs to amend L P C dash twenty-four dash zero three nine Trinidad Planning Capacity.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the city applied, and made twenty-four, city applied for grant through DOLA, or it's called a local planning capacity grant. Um, this is, this grant was designed through Proposition one twenty-three to help with capacity as well as some consultation of, and basically it's, it's all surrounding affordable housing. So we rewarded a hundred thirty-six thousand in, in August twenty twenty-four. With that, we were, we hired a new, or we hired a, a new, we added capacity in my department as well as partnered with my role planner, Michael Yurin, to continue helping us with our housing, um, you know, our, our expenses and our affordable housing, which I think we've, a couple of months ago, we talked about how we've had some really, really recent successes. This grant was a big part of that, to, to help us get there and help us create some funding to pay for Michael Yurin and all that, as well as some of the, the additional capacity.
Um, uh, so it was a two year, it's a two year project period, um, and one of the aspects of the grant is to adopt expedited review. Now, I kind of loved to know this one, because you guys did that before I was in here, so, all I had to do was submit, take the snippets and submit it, and then they said, oh, you, you did so great, I'm like, I know. I was like, I didn't do anything, I just, I just submitted, I just pressed, you know, submit, but uh, because we were so timely in that, there were some extra funds, and so they actually allocated an extra fifty thousand dollars for those people that can be, um, that got it completed in a timely manner. Um, so we, this is a, this is a mandate to add fifty thousand dollars to the grant, there's zero match on that. Um, and what we're gonna use this fifty thousand dollars for, like I said, we've made some pretty good strides in affordable housing, so we're going to turn it more towards um the, at least starting the framework for a comprehensive plan, uh, our comprehensive plan as a cities was adopted in two thousand seventeen, um, so we're eight years in, these things take quite a bit of time. So, the plan now, what we forward with this fifty thousand is to at least start the framework to get um, maybe use this money for a match or something else to continue to work on it, probably a more, a revamp of our comprehensive plan. Um, this is a very, very uh, impertinence moment, just, just barely starting out, but um, we're gonna start looking through, getting a, a consultant to help us through it, um, and work through with us, but it's uh, yeah, it's about ten years in, or ten years probably a good time to redo your comprehensive plan, so. It's, it's a good time to start this and it's a good use of funds, like I said, we've made really good leeway on our affordable housing, so. Um, yeah, it's a good, good use of funds, they kind of modified it too, they're like, oh, before they were really big against using it for like a comprehensive plan. I think a lot of people are like, but we, we're getting somewhere, what else can we do, so they opened that up and they said, yeah, you can do the comprehensive plan. Um, so that's, that's a, that's the request, it's just an end or, or grant actually, so, to accept an extra fifty thousand, um, which I'm, I'm pretty happy about.
I never turned down money. Thank you, any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I need a motion for me, I need your permission to sign the letter request to DOLA to amend L P C dash twenty four dash three oh nine Trinidad planning capacity. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shu, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DeBono, call the vote please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Oldtree? Yes. Williamson? Grago.
Yes. Item ninety, consideration of the proposal for geotechnical engineering services from R J H Consultants Incorporated.
Working on all the superstars, too.
Superstars. The water guy.
So, uh, about a month ago, I, I spoke to council about Monument Lake and um, the geotechnical services that were mandated to uh perform. Uh, there's also another component, and that's all about securing Trinidad's water future, that's staff's ongoing effort to do that. Uh, the reason they are combined is because it's, the grant we will be applying for is more favorable uh as far as match goes. So we did discuss that, um, what I'm requesting tonight is a um, ninety seven thousand two hundred forty five dollar expense. It is in budgeted in this year's um, in twenty twenty five budget, that's the money there. Um, so this would be phase one, this is the on ground collection data, uh, that involves drill rigs, bat homes. We want to get that work done now during the off seasons, so as not to impact Monument Lake Resort operations. Um. I guess that's it, but questions?
No questions, looks like good work.
Well, thank you, Jim, I have no questions. Thank you, Jim, no questions.
So, I have a couple questions, so, um, as, as much as is possible, um. Understandably, you, you can foresee every single situation that comes up, but as much as is possible, will, will this um verify every item that isn't verifiable, verifiable, in effect, like it, it will, you know, uh, say, um, a measurement of something is reported, will it, will it be verified, if everything will be verified that is possible to be verified?
The uh, the work, and where the uh provided uh matches the comprehensive dam safety evaluation. So every item that, that is in that evaluation, which will satisfy the state regulator, will be evaluated.
Okay.
Now, what we find, um.
Right.
The only drawing we have of the dam is in, from nineteen thirty three, one page with a few notes on it, that's the reason we have to do this.
Okay.
Or it, it allows us to remain compliant with dam safety regulations.
But measurements where possible will be verified, or.
Okay.
Um, I have no further questions, mayor.
There's a dam on Monument Lake?
Yes. You drive across it when.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's.
Yes, oh, yeah.
You, you were just asking us.
No, I just, I just, I've been up there all my life, I just didn't pay attention.
Yeah.
This is short, it's not a very big dam.
No, it's not, but it is considered high hazard, and the reason behind that is potential for uh loss of life, because there are people living over there. That's how it's classified, and that's the reason.
Does the traffic over it cause potential problems too?
No, that's compaction, that makes sense.
You engineer guys are just too, too awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the proposal.
So moved.
Mr. Shu moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the vote please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Oldtree? Yes. Williamson?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes. Item nine, reports by city man. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, I appreciate it. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Um, thank you, mayor, uh, just a couple of things tonight, um, we want to welcome Kathy, Kathy Woodring. She's our new animal shelter manager, she's in her second week, and boots on the ground reviewing staffing and operations. Um, we're excited that Kathy brings with her a strong background in management and budgeting, so, um, we're anxious to see that department take off. Uh, police chief interviews are Friday, the police chief interviews, we have three finalists, they're gonna go through three panels. One panel which is focused mostly on departments, uh, Mr. Downs, the judge, Audra will be playing up that panel along with a couple of other folks, city departments that interact with the police chief, as well as represented from the police union. The second panel will be a command panel, that's gonna include the sheriff, the D A, the fire chief, the um interim police chief and our H R director, as well as the sheriff, I think I mentioned sheriff.
Yes.
The. And then the final panel is myself, it's one on one with me. So we'll um do that on Friday, and hopefully have a direction by afternoon that day. So I want to thank everyone who's agreed to be a part of that, we try to focus on uh the different personalities and folks within the city that work directly with that position. We will host, uh, once we have someone onboard, we will host a public meeting greet with our new police chief at the police station, give the public a chance to interact with them. Uh, the mayor covered some of these items, we just wanted to congratulate the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and thanks Space Decree, which served as an indoor venue able to bring in some of the, some of the, those that didn't need to dance in the rain, they got to dance in the space. So we were happy to be able to do that. Um, also the motorcycle transit, what a neat thing for the mayor to start the race, and for the police chief to lead them out on the road. Um, that particular race, the only thing I'll add is it starts in Naxet, North Carolina, and ends at a lighthouse on the Oregon coast, so. These are bikes over a hundred years old, so a lot of excitement about that. Um, wanted to inform council that we did receive the one bid on the golf course. So we had reported that two weeks ago, that we had the one bid, that we didn't feel it was sufficient, that we wanted to go one step further and get an operation plan. I have to say that we didn't feel like we needed to pay additional funding to get that operation plan. We didn't feel like the um bid meant the specifications, that we didn't feel like it was something we could afford. So we have, as of today, notified the, the bidder that we've closed without selecting anyone to move forward. I did meet with the golf association this last week, had a nice meeting with them, I'll be turning around and meeting with them in the next two weeks, and be coming back with a plan for twenty twenty six. Uh, that looks a little bit like hybrid, I think what I would say is that we only have the one bidder, and basically the feedback we got is that while our golf course is an absolute gem, because it hasn't been monetized, that creates a barrier, because people bidding on it don't see the value of it yet, because that value doesn't exist on paper. So I feel like what we probably need to do after meeting with the golf association, circling back and having conversations with staff, is we need kind of an interim period in which case we can show that the golf course can be monetized, so. The agreement moving forward with golf association will look a little bit different than it has in past years, so if we can use them as an interim step, and they seem open to do that in hope, helping us to show on paper that we do have an asset that can be monetized, um, that's our hope for the future, to come back to the table with an operator much as council had hoped to do this time, just no, nobody bid at it, it just doesn't show on paper to be quite as successful as we know it can be. So, um, I'm happy to meet with you individually or go through any questions that you have on that, but I did want to let you know that we've closed it and leave declined the bid at this point, okay? The next two Mondays, we will have work sessions, and we started golf last week, and we were all glad for that. We are gonna move forward with two work sessions, one on the twenty second, and one on the twenty ninth at three o'clock on those Mondays. On the twenty second, we're gonna cover a project staff just completed, Mr. Mason's department has completed the building improvement plan. So we're gonna bring that forward and show you the buildings that are ha- housing our operations, and the importance of what we feel like the next step is with those buildings, which is maintenance and upgrades to those. We'll also be covering the twenty twenty four I B C building codes, we'll be explaining what, what and why we're recommending the adoption of those at the work session on the twenty second. On the twenty ninth, we'll cover the new ordinance for logic tax, or at least the new proposed ordinance for logic tax, get some feedback from you. Answer questions, this is based on the feedback you gave at a work session several weeks ago, and then introduce the conversation of short term rules. So those are kind of the policy items that close out this year, to be honest, unless council wants to adopt something else or look at another policy, because when we hit October, it's really gonna be about budget, and budget conversations, and where we want to go, so. Um, we'll start with the draft budget at the first regular meeting in October, followed by some work sessions, and then uh, the presentation of the final budget in the public hearing, so policy items can happen in that phase as well, but they will likely slow down after we deal with these couple of last policy items. The water tank project is moving on to Allendale, um, and so any questions about that, Mr. Veal is wait anxiously awaiting to cut a hole inside of the tank, so you can all walk in, as he offered to do at the last meeting, I believe. Many of you took him up on that opportunity, so we'll be letting you know when you can walk in a water tank. Um, the power outage is from several days ago, very interesting, caused by a raccoon who jumped up on one of our main uh fif- one of our fifteen K V A oil circuit breakers, it's completely marked black now. He just jumped right up there to get worn and got fried as a result, it also caused power outages for several hours.
The raccoon did not survive.
The raccoon did not survive, um, we have pictures, actually. Um, I know. Exactly, it's working, but, but we're still assessing the damage the raccoon caused of damage. It's right behind the power plant.
Oh, okay.
One of our fifteen oil based uh circuits, um, huge circuits. Um, our gas department just completed the Public Utilities Commission audit, which is done every couple of years. We're expecting a good report from that, we're hoping to have that, there'll obviously be some operational changes discussed in that audit, but um, Mr. Caro, joined by Mr. Torres, um, and Ms. Veal, uh, did a great job representing the city in those audits, so. I've been in most departments the past two weeks, holding insurance renewal meetings, uh, the power line, water, gas, as well as both police and fire unions, and meeting with general services. I go to Public Works tomorrow morning, and uh, visit with streets and parks and fleet, and that'll make the circuit. Talking about the fifteen percent increase and explaining what the options are there. Um, we'll have second meetings with unions in the next week or two, I think we're gonna be back to you in October with uh a complete success, you'll see those in the budget, so. Um, as we discussed, employees from Public Works and Human Resources have attended Source of Trainings the past couple of days in Alamosa. Mr. Just and Mr. Gallegos attended signing and pavement markings, and then they were joined today by Ms. Coleman with our H R department who attended along with Mr. Just and Mr. Gallegos, the new commercial drive dislacing, C D L rules and regulations. Not sure if you knew this, but we're officially, we're officially designated training center on C D L licenses. We became that, Ms. Valente pushed for that, and got that set up. It's been great for us, it allows us to bring on new hires who don't have a C D L, and, and minimize the cost, it costs about six hundred dollars to get a C D L now, because we're providing the value of about seventeen hundred dollars in that training on the job, on our equipment, to the employees, so that's been a huge cost savings, and one I don't know if council realized we had done. Um, once again, as the mayor mentioned, the skate park's completed, if you haven't gone by, go look. Um, also wanted to reiterate that Saturday, October fourth, would be a great event for us, but I also wanted you to know that we're in the process of having banners printed that say this project was funded by our one percent tax, you see them around town, uh, we'll be making that, sure, that banner's up at the skate park for the party. Um, we also have a South Side Park bathroom project that's being bid out now to improve the bathrooms at the South Side Park. Mr. Mason's department's um, working on that, and if we're able to secure good bids, we hope to finish that this year. Uh, pickleball's coming, I'll close with pickleball, um, one more week, and we'll be operational. The fence is backordered, so we won't actually have the fence until October, but pickleball can be realized, dreams of pickleball within one year. Um, once again, we're also making sure this project has a banner saying it was completed with one percent sales tax. So unless you have questions for me, that's what's going on.
We're all the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Just.
Thank you, mayor, council members, one item to report on, and that is, we held a city council candidate information session last Friday, as we told you we were going to be uh having, it was attended by seven of the nine candidates seeking office, both mayor role candidates were in attendance. Uh, we cover the definition of municipal corporation, the way cities are funded, including the general fund, which is of course by taxes and enterprise funds, which are funded by rates or services. We also included a breakdown of the areas of municipal priorities and responsibilities such as public safety, public utilities, public works, development, cultural and recreational, and administration. We're resided over by your own material marshal, it was very well attended, a lot of staff, you know, again, seven of the nine uh candidates, I won't say who wasn't there, but, but some of the nine, it was, it was a good turnout. Uh, it was a, it was a very positive event, and we hope to do that again every time this election cycle is gone by. I do want to say that we also, once the election is held, we'd like to be having a training for newly elected uh council members and in the, the mayor elect. I'm not looking at anybody, I'm not serious, but, yeah, so anyway, we just want to emphasize that, wish we would have done that before, we did not do that, but, but hope to do that this time. Anyway, again, after the election, but that is all I have.
Quick, quick question.
Yes, sir, will you tell us who was there?
Uh, well, no, yeah, I mean, tell. Uh, well, no, yeah, I'd be telling you by default who wasn't there, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Just. Oh, mention.
Question.
Sure.
We have our fall district meeting for C M O.
We do, thank you. The twenty ninth, yes, we will conclude the work session by four thirty.
Okay.
And I should have mentioned that, and I apologize. Ms. Lopez, Ms. Taves, Ms. Garrett have been working on that. We are hosting the C M L district meeting, we'll be at Sunset Grill, we need to be there, um, no later than five. And work session will conclude by four thirty on that day. We will have the two items, it'll be we may set timeframes for discussion.
Keep them on pace.
And we really hope that you will attend, it's important, um, the staff has put a great deal of time in reaching out to all jurisdictions, there are potentially eleven jurisdictions in our districts, so we want to make sure that we're represented there. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Call vote please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Old tree? Yes, Williamson?
Yes.
Grago.
Yes. Meeting is now adjourned, thank you all.